Seconded by Mr. Palomini, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is Resolution 2018-02, the acceptance of properties from the City of Schenectady acquired during their foreclosure in 2017. Entertainer motion by Mr. Palomini, seconded by Karen Zeluski-Walzounis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other business to come before the agency? Move for adjournment, Mr. Palomini, seconded by Mr. Mouda Verin. All in favor?
Aye.
Agency stands adjourned. Thank you.
All right, we'll call to order the Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for tonight. The first item on the agenda is the Finance Committee. We are lucky enough to have our state representatives here tonight, Senator Chiesco, Assemblymen Santa Barbara and Steck. They've partnered quite well with the city. We're very happy to have them here and thank them very much for all the hard work they've done on behalf of the city. And give the mayor just a little opportunity to say something before each of our representatives will have a chance to speak.
Thank you, Palomini, for setting this up. I want to welcome everyone here. And just on behalf of the city, extend a sincere thanks for the work that you've done individually and collectively over the last couple of years. I suspect your work in Central Park has been significant. Mr. Santa Barbara worked with the fire department, some money lined up for projects we're going to do in the Crane Street neighborhood. We appreciate that. Senator worked in the greenhouse, the A-Diamond, Music Haven, redirected some of the money from Senator Farley. Still working out with the executive side of the state government to get some fire apparatus.
You don't put my name on the side of that truck.
I was gonna put it right on the front so everybody can see it. Not give them the second.
It'll end up with the governor's name on it.
You said that. I gave you your partnership. I didn't say.
Now there is.
But we do appreciate the work that you've done and appreciate your taking the time to come here so that hopefully you'll have a better understanding of some of the difficulties we face on a daily basis and an ongoing basis to provide the services that the people want and expect within our community. That'll turn back to Palomini.
So I thought the best way to proceed is to give each of our leaders the opportunity to speak and talk about some of the things that they provided for the city and some of the initiatives that they look to carry forward. And would that start with Senator Chiesco? I don't know if you'd like to come up here so the camera can see you head on or stay there, but we can pass you the mic.
I'm good. This is my good side. You won't hear anything that goes through the phone.
It's not cheating.
Well, first of all, let me say thank you for offering us the opportunity to be here. And I think all of us are individuals who understand what those who serve at a local level face every day, because each one of us did serve at a local level, I think, at one time or another. And we know it's the most difficult problem, the most challenging, the most time-consuming. But I have to tell you, when I think back, it was one of the most rewarding experiences I've had in my life to serve in this city hall here in the City of Schenectady. I came in today and I got to use that historic bathroom that used many years ago. And of course, it was locked as it usually was, and we found the key and was able to use that. I have to tell you, where Mr. Santa Barbara is sitting right there, I served here from 1977 to 1982. But after I got elected in 1977, we came in for our first meeting, Frank Ducey was sitting right where you are, councilman, and I was sitting right there. And I got here early, mayor, very early, because I wanted to sit right next to the mayor, because he was the important guy. Oh, what a history Frank Ducey has.
That's why I do that.
That's why he's doing that. That's where all the power is. So I came in, I sat down, and everybody else came in and sat down way, way afar, and this, and all these other seats were still vacant in front. So I'm looking at them, and they're all looking at each other, and they're smiling at each other and smirking at each other. All of a sudden, Frank reaches in his pocket, and it looked like he took out a baseball bat. It was a cigar. He put that thing in his mouth, as he did just about every meeting we had. He lit that thing, and the sparks flew all over my suit. And they started laughing like I had burn holes all over my shirt. The next time I got here earlier, I was sitting where the mayor. But I think, as we share, the concerns you have with your local municipalities here in your city, we have our own share of concerns right now. And you understand, we have a situation with the federal government, which is doing a new tax bill, which is going to impact especially New York State. Now, to be honest, anything that we're facing really this year in particular, but not in terms of changing what we can do to mitigate that, some of your constituents in mind, really doesn't relate to what's happening out. We don't have a four and a half billion dollar deficit, really, because of what the federal government has done over the years. And to tell you the truth, when we do that 2% cap, which I think we will do on spending, and we get those numbers in for the first quarter from New York City and some of the bonuses, I actually think this tax bill is going to help some of those corporations and some businesses down there with the bonuses, or probably going to close that gap and mitigate it to a certain extent. But what we can't mitigate sometimes is the environment that we're in totally in New York State, because if you look at some of the statistics, we do have some concerns about the outmigration of what's happening in New York State over the last 10 years, mayor and council members. We've lost a million in population who have left the state of New York. Last year, we lost 190,000 individuals who left the state of New York. I think we're .1 in terms of population right now, in number 40 in that. So there are a whole series of things out there we'd like to see happen a little differently in terms of some of the mandates placed on you, some of the regulations that come down to local municipalities. I think we're all concerned about that shared service process. And as you know, we were able to mitigate that to a certain extent last year, because if you think you got less AIM money or assistance municipality funding than you should get, last year you would have got penalized if you didn't work appropriately. And I was at the first meeting with the governor, it was a breakfast with our Senate group, and I asked the first question, and I asked the governor, "Governor, how can you ask local municipalities?" And I don't know if you still do this or have done this, but they do this in the town I live in. When I get my tax bill, it shows, I think the last time it was 70%, New York State mandates are the cost of the bill that I pay with my tax bill in those local municipalities. So I asked the governor, "How can you expect a quality of savings out of 30 to 35% when the state of New York provides a lot of mandates?" And as you know, the governor does have a mandate commission, and we're still waiting for that mandate commission to give us some unfunded mandates that we can eliminate potentially, and we'd love to see that. And then I said to him this, "You should use a care. You shouldn't use a stick if you want municipalities to show savings." And he said, "What do you mean?" I said, "For every dollar they show, they save. And first of all, you shouldn't penalize them for not being able to save dollars. But if they do, you should give them a dollar back from the state for the savings they've shown." And he said, "I'll do it." And he did do that. But I also said to him this, and I'll close with this, because I know my colleagues will say some things. When I was here as a city councilperson, or if you're a mayor or any local position, I was not an expert on consolidation, which is the dirty word, shared services as they call it. Now, I didn't understand it fully. I didn't know how to do it. We could soon have used help back then if we were going to do it. I think you could use help now. I told the governor, "You should have groups of panels of professionals in that field. If you want local municipalities to save dollars and share services, intergovernmental shared services, send a group out there by their permission so they can evaluate and they give recommendations, not mandates to you, what you to do, but give recommendations, professionals who have some understanding of how to do that." And he said he'd look at that, and as of yet, he hasn't done that, but I think he did say along the way that he would offer individuals to come out and show and give suggestions on exactly how that has been done. Lastly, I would say, as the mayor has mentioned, I think it was very helpful last year with my colleagues with our educational funding. They sure the governor has done the same thing with the educational funding. He always kind of lowballs foundation aid, general aid. I can guarantee you, we'll be providing more money. Why is that important? Because when your constituents can pay less for their school taxes, they have more funding to pay to meet the needs of their municipality. So in that sense, I think it's helpful to you guys in the local municipalities. So I was happy to get some grants, which the mayor talked about, worked to get more myself, and I think I talked to the mayor about this, Assemblyman Steck, and I think Mr. Santa Barbara also is supportive of it. We're working on some way to get a formula for your water sewer and sanitary sewer lines, like the CHIPS program, something that makes sense. I have to tell you, that is endorsed by the Organization of Villages, Nitecom, which I believe you are the vice chairman's, and also the counties, because we're putting down a lot of nice roads with that CHIPS money. Nobody who's come to me, who was a supervisor of pilots, or who was a mayor, or just a supervisor or councilman, has said, "I don't like the program." But they've come and said, "We love the program. We want more funding for roads and bridges." But they're also coming now, saying, "We're putting down beautiful roads and helping with the bridges, got paved New York, a bridge New York." They're collapsing under the weight of 100-year-old sewer and water lines, which take back to the civil work. So what that program is, is emergency breaks, they have some funding to deal with that, and also to have a maintenance program that you can put in place, because there's a lurking monster underneath the ground. You saw what happened in Montgomery County, sewage going into the mall. You saw what happened in Albany, Colony. It goes on and on and on. It will not be stabilized by any local municipality doing it in and above by itself. You're going to need help from the state, and I think that sister program, no matter what the formula is, if we can get it to work along with CHIPS, I think will help you know whether you put those roads down, they're not going to collapse under the weight of, with the sublevel that's not going to be holding them up. So other than that, I'm here to listen also and find out what the rest of your concerns and needs are. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate the service you provide at a local level. I had the experience, and I know how difficult it is. And thank God the mayor doesn't smoke cigars.
Well, thank you, Senator Chiesco. Next, I think we'll go right down the line, and Assemblyman Steck.
Wireless fancy. So thank you very much, John, and mayor, and all the council members. We've put grant money, of course, as you know, into Central Park, into Ballfields, Music Haven. I think that project has moved forward in an outstanding manner. Angela and I also helped with the, now Proctors doesn't have this money yet, but they're working on it. It has to do with repairing the HVAC system, which services a large portion of downtown Schenectady. So we put money in that with the assistance of the speaker. We put money into Steinmetz Park. Also, when I think of the great accomplishment is money that is going to the Woodlawn Preserve to allow that preserve hopefully to merge with the Pine Bush, because Pine Bush has all kinds of resources to maintain that parkland, which could not be raised by the city or by the community on its own. To touch on some of the other things that Jim mentioned, in the area of consolidation, we have legislation which we put in originally, at the suggestion of the city and county of Schenectady, to allow all municipalities within the county to join county self-insured health plans. Unfortunately, the governor announced today in a press release that he is continuing to pursue the idea of municipal purchasing consortiums. And it remains to see what the details of this plan are, but unless those consortiums can be formed to utilize a self-insured option, there isn't really much saving, certainly would be none for the city in terms of being able to join with other municipalities to borrow or to buy private health insurance. All the savings is in being self-insured. The mayor told me the city is self-insured, but obviously, if you combine with all the other municipalities in the county, you spread the risk more, the cost would be lower. It would be better for everyone, and you can, as the mayor pointed out to me, work on containing costs. AIM doesn't look like it's going anywhere. The governor has been hostile to that for some time. The CHIPS program is outstanding. I give credit to Jim. I enjoyed working with him on that. And what I do want to say is, I think in contrast to a lot of other members of the legislature, one of the things I really focus on in my position is raving, raising revenue. Now, you know, you turn that into the word taxes, and it becomes a dirty word, but we have introduced legislation to reimpose the stock transfer tax, which New York State had from 1905 to 1981. And that tax is shockingly low. We'd love to pay a sales tax that is .0025, or one quarter, 1%. But because of all the sales activities that takes place in this state, it would raise approximately $14 billion. Now, we changed our bill to put all that money into infrastructure, and if we had that tax, we would have the money to put into the CHIPS equivalent for water and sewer. I always forget the acronym. I'm not as good.
Swap.
Swap, into the swap program. So I think it's...
Safe Water Infrastructure Act.
Right. We would have the money to do that, and I think that the stock transfer tax is very, very important. I would note that the history of this tax is very interesting, because it was actually adopted, proposed and adopted by, as a result of the activity of the Republican Party at the turn of the century, because they wanted indirect taxes such as sales tax, as opposed to direct taxes that the Democrats preferred, such as income tax. And in fact, every single Republican in the state legislator, legislature, save one, voted for the stock transfer tax. So if we could get that now, we would solve all our problems with respect to infrastructure. So the final word, when we talk about unfunded mandates, I make this request all the time, and make this request to the school district. I always say, "Give us a list of the 10 worst unfunded mandates, and we will take a look at them, and you know, on a piecemeal fashion, try to address something that could make a difference." I've never gotten, even when I've talked to the local government council, I've never gotten a list. And when I talk to the School Boards Association, I never get a list. So on the subject of schools, just to close, I think we've all been instrumental in getting more aid to the City of Schenectady. I think this year will be more difficult, but always, because of the nature of my district. The very first item in my budget letter to the speaker is always education, not only because of Schenectady, but also Niskuna, and both Colonies, and Manans are all, that public education is the number one issue in my district. We have just tremendous public support for trying to improve our schools, and I can say that since I was elected in 2012, it's really been a pleasure working with all of you, and you really don't know how much I've come to appreciate the City of Schenectady. That's really, thank you.
Assemblyman Santa Barbara.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and city council members, certainly for the invitation to join you this evening. It's great to see my colleagues here, and I think they said a lot of what I'm going to say as well. Just to build off of what the Assemblyman Steck just said, education, of course, is the top priority. And this is our sixth year in office, and of course, Jim's been here a lot longer, but...
Two years.
But it's true what Assemblyman Steck said. Every year we have seen progress, and it's been in partnership with here at the city. A lot of advocacy happening here in the city. A lot of people join us up at the Capitol to advocate for public education and a number of other things. And this year will be no different. As Senator Chiesco said, we saw the governor's numbers. Our numbers are going to be much better. We need to get to a level where we can build on progress that we have seen over the years, the restoration of the gap elimination, and then working towards full funding. To see that funding reduced this year, we could potentially lose a lot of the progress that we've already made in public education. So we will be there, we'll be there on the front line to support that as a number one priority. And of course, not far underneath that is infrastructure. I have a civil engineering background, a lot of you know, so I've been talking about this for quite a bit. Last year, the mayor and Mayor Villa from Amsterdam, we advocated for funding for an emergency water infrastructure repair fund, which was actually implemented and put to use this year, which allows funding to be accessed much quicker than going through any other process. So if we see a sewer break like it did in Amsterdam a few years back, we can't make them wait for months and months to repair that line. If a water main breaks and the funds aren't there, we got to get that funding to where it's needed, and it has to be there in a matter of days rather than a matter of months. So that's been very successful. So this year, we, one of my requests is to continue that, continue that fund in this year's budget. They funded it with $10 million last year. I don't know where that stands. It is a statewide program. I know Amsterdam has taken advantage of that. I talked to the mayor here about maybe doing some, something through that fund as well. But again, it's a statewide program. The $10 million comes from the larger fund, the Water Infrastructure Fund. So it's just set aside, so it's used in a different manner. So I think that's something we can continue considering the success we have seen. Some of the other things, we've, we just went and talked with the public library here in Schenectady and the county public library system. The Philistine Branch investment, which is a tremendous investment, just has such an amazing impact on the community. And this year, of course, library funding is another one of those items that we need to fight for. It's not where it should be. And I toured the library ahead of Advocacy Day, because what we're trying to do here now is we're trying to do something in the Mal Pleasant neighborhood, which I think will have the same impact that it did as the Philistine Branch. So we hope to see that, that funding come through. I requested some funding to support the county on that branch. We do want to see it be successful, and then that may not be the end. We may see additional, additional investments through the library system. The important thing is, is that community resource, that asset is there, and it's the start of something bigger, because people can build around that, and you can see neighborhoods turned around with significant investment like that. And one of the other things, I don't want to take up too much time, one of the things we mentioned a few years back is the zombie properties. And you know, that, we attacked that on several different, we took several different approaches. We had legislation that passed when Jim was still in the assembly, actually. The zombie legislation that goes after the foreclosed homes in the banks that are responsible for them and tracking them down and getting them to take some responsibility for these properties that have been around some for a decade, but also identifying them. You know, I put out some information on how to identify those properties, and even to figure out where they are has been a challenge, but we've made some significant progress. And of course, the land bank, the land bank initiative, I think has worked great. We made some advancements on that. We announced here on involving some opportunities for homeownership, which is, I think is absolutely wonderful. I've seen the land bank work in Amsterdam, and I think we've all signed on to the letter this year, because the funding is limited. It's actually running out at this point from the Attorney General's side of things. But we do want to see that program continue. So in this year's budget, I think everybody said, "We've got a difficult budget." It's true. We've got a gap that we've got to figure out how to close, but we don't want to lose the progress that we made. We want to continue investing in the things that have made a difference here. And some of these things I just mentioned, we want to make sure that we hold the line, improve on some very important initiatives that I think we need to continue. So hopefully, when the One House budgets come out, we will have that conversation and see these continued funding for these important initiatives. And then the mayor mentioned a couple of, a couple of the projects. I made a list of some of the things that have happened here in Schenectady. The smart, smart lighting, smart street lighting initiative, and I got to give the mayor credit, because now the governor is saying he wants to have it in all the municipalities. He made an announcement, but the mayor was ahead of the game. And we made a lot of progress here before the announcement came yesterday that this is something we want to see deployed in all our municipalities. And when I saw that announcement, I thought of you, mayor. So it's great to see that Schenectady is ahead of the curve on that. We funded $1 million for my old neighborhood, the Mal Pleasant neighborhood, to see that technology come to that, come to that Crane Street area. And I used to live on Crane Street, and I talked to people about it, and it almost sounds like something that's hard to believe, that you're going to have access to technology in this manner. But the proof will be there when the project gets underway, which I think is going to start at some point this year. But I'm very excited to see the, to see that technology being deployed and all our residents having access to it.
It's a no-brainer. Thomas Edison would say, "We got to have smart lighting."
You got to have smart lighting. It only makes sense. And some of the other, the Philistine Library we talked about, Michigan Avenue Bridge, $4.7 million to do work on that bridge, to restore that bridge. I think that's a big win for Schenectady. And the Brezlos Department Store, anybody remember that? On State Street, so $2.9 million for renovations to that. The docking facility this year, I think it's this year, $500,000, docking facility at Mohawk Harbor was awarded. And Assemblyman Steck mentioned the $500,000 for Proctors. No, actually, this is, this is another project that we funded to do the new seats and the ADA compliance. The Nature Trail at Vale Park, I think Lisa, you were talking about this a while back, so $415,000. So that's an exciting project that's going to connect with my side. We also funded some of the renovations you are seeing in the My Side Museum. I know they put out a letter in just, just the other day to talk about some improvements they need, they actually need, they badly need some repairs to their roof, which is leaking at this point. So we hope that we can find some money in the budget to help them as well. Very important to have the museum, museum continue its progress as well. $205,000 for the Jerry Burrell Park improvements. So that's another exciting investment in the neighborhoods. We talked about the Emergency Infrastructure Repair Fund. And of course, the Regional Economic Development Council, this year, Capital Region was the top performer, $85 million, $5 million of that going to projects right here in Schenectady County. So there's a lot that's happened. I know it's a difficult budget, but I can assure you, all three of us are there fighting for this community. We're fighting for our constituents and, you know, things like education and infrastructure. And these investments, they're also important, because what they do is, they bring back local jobs, they boost our economy, they support. And I was on the county legislature for five years before the assembly, and all the work that's gone downtown, and it's amazing how the timing of all this has really come together now. We're seeing continued progress, and not to have all three of us up there to be able to continue the work that's, to support the work that was done downtown in the city, even throughout the whole county for that matter, because, you know, local jobs are local jobs. They mean a lot to everybody in the entire county. So with that, I think I've talked enough, but I want to thank you for giving me the time, and I hope to work on some future initiatives. I know there's some other items we need to talk about at some point, but my door is always open. I'm right across the street, and I'm always, I'm always here for the city council members. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be negligent if I didn't point out that Senator Amador was also invited. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend tonight. First of all, as a sponsor of the Resolution to oppose unfunded mandates, I can promise you that you will get a list of top 10 of unfunded mandates that we'd like to see passed. So you'll be getting that shortly.
That's great.
Certainly will include Assemblyman Santa Barbara and Senator Chiesco on that. So thank you for that. You've all been tremendous partners with us in the city, particularly with regards to the parks. We've seen a tremendous renaissance of our parks, and that's one of the things I think that we know, we're realistic about the state budget that is tight, but we'd like to see if possible that there's some additional funding to finish up some of the projects and continue some of the other projects that we have going in the parks. Senator Chiesco, you're obviously one of the better athletes that have come out of this area, and I know you know the importance of athletics to the region. And this is not just a Schenectady thing, it's a regional thing. The A-Diamond, the B-Diamond, C-Diamond, that's a regional thing. It's not a city.
There's a lot of buzz and excitement about the A-Diamond.
Absolutely.
It's just going to be a beautiful, back to its beautiful facility that it was, and I'm going to try to help get something, help the lights on that there.
You, all three of you have been tremendous partners in that, and if possible, we're seeking some additional funds in that. I don't know what's possible, but I'll put a number out there. Ask for maybe $600,000 more to finish up our projects in the parks. And again, this is, this is a regional thing. It's not a city thing. And, you know, we'll have one of the premier facilities with the A-Diamond, as well as the other parks, in upstate New York, and that's something...
The easiest way to ask for that is to send us a memo, okay, in writing, and, you know, possibly we could attempt to share some of that, if that's what the number is. We've already got memos in for some light money, for some... We've already got memos in for some light money, for some logo, our facility there, and the Green House facility. But this is a new year. I'm not sure, I don't think any of us are sure what those are gonna look like. There's, how much money's gonna be there for those types of things. We have an obligation, you know. I think we wanna kind of stabilize, you know, and make us more competitive with taxes. But if taxes are gonna be coming and the revenue is there, we've gotta fight for as much as we can for our districts. You don't go there without the knowledge of understanding. And I think all three of us do that.
Absolutely.
John, are the plans already ready for the 600,000 that you need?
Some of the plans are, some are not. I think the mayor probably would be better to speak on that than-
There's still some design options for the scoreboard and some of the finished work. It's how do you integrate not only the A Diamond, but Music Haven, money's been spent on the upgrade, tennis courts, we have a billion there. So it's to bring everything together and it's a little bit there for everybody. Trying to finish it off and, and make it something that everybody gets to use and it adds value to the community and regions as a whole.
And one more thing before I turn it over to my colleagues. Perhaps some consideration for the ESCO sales tax, for those watching on television. The ESCO is the energy service company. Basically, what it does, what the budget calls for is the elimination of the sales tax exemption on non-residential transmission and distribution of gas and/or electricity when purchased from an ESCO company. And this would increase the local tax revenue by some $45 million every year. Certainly, we have pressures on us locally, but that would be a big help to us. And if that would be something that you would take under consideration. Now I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yes, Senator.
Just one thing before you turn it over. You should know, and I think my colleagues are in line in support to do this. I think it's gonna happen in the Assembly and the governor's on board. We may do it in the budget. But we have already mitigated the exemption for your constituents and my constituents for their property and income that the federal government is closing down now. We decouple that from New York City Senate. That passed unanimously. So we know we have to mitigate the negative aspects of what the federal government is doing there. But we have to be truthful about why we are being hurt by all of that. There's 40 to 45 other states which are very happy with that tax bill. And we happen to be one of the states which have moderate to high taxes. And so it's gonna impact some of our constituents. Now, probably the more wealthier constituents with the houses that are bigger, paying 30, 40, 50, $60,000, it's gonna really impact them. Not as much upstate, but to a certain extent, yes. So we know we've gotta do everything we can in the position we are in to mitigate those things. We've, we've taken the first step in the Senate, and I think there'll be more to come.
Ms. Lucio.
So, I don't know if you're all familiar with the Opportunity Zones. It's a new economic development tool for low-income communities. So it's a program that provides federal tax incentives for reinvesting capital gains into these opportunity funds. There are specialized vehicles designated to invest in low-income areas called Opportunity Zones. The zones themselves are comprised of low-income communities on census tracts and designated by the governors. There's a whole, there's a whole laundry list of things here. I don't believe that's gonna cost anything, but I think it will help in our low-income areas to get private investors in and help with the revitalization that's already, you know, been coming. But it's just another tool that I think we should be able to use if we could get some designation here. That would be helpful.
Yeah. Basically, it calls for tax incentives for businesses and company, you know, a business to develop in a low-income neighborhood. So it gives tax incentives for them at a structured level over a number of years. It's something that would help redevelop, as you know, Schenectady is one of the poorer cities around, and it would help redevelop some of our low-income neighborhoods. So if you would consider that.
Mr. Carrato. Reaching back a couple of years, you were in the Assembly and also co-sponsored by Assemblyman Steck. In 1516, you put forward a Healthy Workplaces legislation specifically around bullying in the workplace and such. And I didn't see that come back around in 1617. And just, I, I, I know I'm probably putting you on the spot, and I don't wanna answer right now, but-
I just read the bill, the new bill, new version. I think it has some significant issues. I think one, I mean, this is the field in which I practice law. And basically, the purpose of a workplace bullying type legislation is so you don't have to be a member of a protected class to complain about that type of behavior. So if you're a woman, you can complain about harassment that rises to a certain level that's offensive to the reasonable woman. It can be considered sex discrimination. But if you're a man facing that sort of thing, nothing, not, there's no legal remedy for that. So one of the problems is that I think finding a way to express that in legislation has not quite been accomplished by the sponsor. And I've been giving suggestions based on my experience as to how that could be done. I'll just give you an example. One of the ways, what the bill used to say previously was something about it would, I would consider a violation of law to set an employee up for failure. The problem with things like that is it's highly subjective. Almost anybody who's unsuccessful in a, in a workplace can make such a claim. So I, I think that's, one of the problems is how do you define this? And then secondly, we have a New York State Division of Human Rights. The current legislation has, yeah, 10 pages of verbiage dealing with how the Human Rights Division will handle this claim when we already have a Human Rights Division that already has a procedure. And why should we re-legislate it? So I think that unfortunately, this bill in and of itself is a great idea, but in order to get it down the road, it's gonna need some revision.
One of the things you should know is Senator Young, which is head of our Fighting Against Committee, is working on a bill which really relates to this in terms of bullying, but also sexual harassment. And the two things that are most important in that bill, because you've seen it before at the state level, are secret agreements at the end where usually a woman has been harassed and there's a dollar-for-dollar payoff. And the person who does this harassment goes on to do it over again because it is kept secret. We saw that with a couple of our colleagues, Mr. Boxley, who was interim for the Speaker, and a few of our Assembly members. But the other thing that is important about that bill is in many instances, when a woman primarily, because it really doesn't impact the man, interviews for a job, they provide them with the opportunity to accept mandated arbitration, which basically says, if you are harassed, you've gotta first of all sit down and try to have arbitration instead of taking you to a place where you would like to take you. In many instances, the woman will say, oh, okay, because they'd like to have a job. Doesn't affect the man because very rarely, let's face it, it has happened before. But what this bill said is you can no longer use that process in an interview, ask the woman for mandated arbitration. Now, it may be good, it may be bad. They may want arbitration, but it doesn't say they would be forced in an interview to say yes to that in order to get a position or a job. The other thing relates to our school system. We did the Dignity for All Students Act. You're probably familiar with that. In that particular bill, and I think it had some good points to it, it says you must report to the State Education Department. The one thing it doesn't say, and I would ask anybody in this room if this is right, it doesn't say, and I would ask you, if your child is bullied at school, would you not wanna know they were bullied? Well, that bill, does it require the school to report to a parent that their child has been bullied at school and there's activity? It's called Jacob's Law because Jacob committed suicide, Jacob Tavis. Assemblywoman Fahy is sponsoring the bill in the Assembly. And I think that's an extremely important bill. Right now, we're asking parents, come in and join the PTA, come in and sit down with us, your teachers, come in and talk about the curriculum. But when your child is bullied, we'll make our own decisions on whether we want to let you know or not let you know about that. That can lead to some tragedies which we've seen happen over the years now. So we passed that last year, 62 to 0. We hope we can get it to the floor, maybe at least for a discussion in the Assembly.
Let me just follow up on a few points that Jim made there. Number one, we have a bill that we introduced that changed the entire way all discrimination cases are handled in this state, whether it's gender, race, disability, to make it more with respect to the state and municipal agencies. It would make it much more like the way the federal system handles it. The federal system is outstanding. Congress exempted itself from it, but for everybody else, it works very well. The arbitration thing, I wanna make a comment about that. What typically happens with people is they don't, there's no discussion of the arbitration provision when you go in for a job. What typically happens is you sign a contract of some kind which contains an arbitration clause in it. That can govern all sorts of violations of law that could affect people based on race, it could affect people based on gender, it could affect people based on age. It doesn't, it doesn't select out any particular person to favor in any sense. And one of the problems with that is there's a thing called the Federal Arbitration Act, which the Supreme Court has interpreted to allow states to only do so much to limit arbitration power. So yes, there's a number of bills pending to try and reduce the ability of employers to impose these arbitration clauses. But unfortunately, while we can reduce the ability, while we can make some, and I have a bill that does this, that makes some of those provisions unconscionable under law because unconscionable is a state definition, not a federal one. But we still face this problem that we have the Federal Arbitration Act, and that pushes a lot of these claims into arbitration.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's all right. Well, thank you for coming. I have to head out to my next stop. I'm sorry. So I-
Thank you so much for coming.
Again, I'm right across the street. If anybody has any questions for me or wants to follow up, I think we're getting a few memos, a few things.
Yep.
I apologize. I'll head out a little early. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mootavaren.
I'm gonna dive into the public safety. As you're aware, we are in the process of providing body cameras to our police officer. And that is, you know, we're encouraging costs by those cameras. Now, there's a large component, cost component to that is video storage. And we look at the national level, it's costing an average of $100 for, for, for each camera. So we just look at the number of offices we have and how much we can equip with these cameras out there and how much it's gonna cost us. It's gonna cost us a significant amount of money. So I'm looking to see if we can go to the, you know, to the state to provide some funding, some assistance to help us offset these costs. Because you look at some of the city and the stats, is that some cities are backing away from, from body cameras because of the storage costs and it's very, it's a significant amount of money. So I don't know if we can, we can do something and provide the numbers and, you know.
Send something out to us.
Yes. We'll, we'll provide those numbers and the state and more detail explanation as well.
Those are helpful because we get that.
Yeah, that, that really is a state issue, not just a city issue. But certainly, as we move forward in our initiative for body cameras, the storage video, even the human aspect of analyzing that video will be a huge component as we move forward. So that will certainly include that in our communications with you. This quarter, feel.
Yeah. I wanted to ask about, you know, I know that the state has a 30% MWB participation rate, and our city's is a little bit lower. And so I was just, you know, you know, we have a lot of conversation. We're gonna have our affirmative action quarterly report tonight, actually. So just in a way, if the state, that we could, we've worked with the state to be able to increase our numbers and, you know, how we could go about making that happen because we're, we're, we're at 12% right now. That's our participation rate. And I know that the state is 30%. And so how does that affect us? Because we're that much lower than the state.
Is your funding tied into that percentage, the state percentage in some way?
I'm not sure if our, some of our funding may be our affirmative action managers here.
Well, it could be with the potential political, with James F. D.A., if that would ever affect unexperienced in the city, anybody that, I'd have to research that and look at that.
Yeah, I, I attended the hearing on MWBE of the Subcommittee on, and I just don't recall any discussion of that phrased in that way. So again, Jim is correct. We'd have to see what, how, what mechanisms exist for elevating these, these numbers.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Rick.
Yes, I think what's become abundantly clear is we have to send some memos out. Be official, that's for sure. And I'm certainly on page with Mr. Mootavaren about body cameras because, as you know, we have a claim coming up soon, you know, in the next cycle, where body cameras could certainly help us, you know, decipher whether we pay the claim, whether we go to court with it, what we do with it. So I think that's important. So I'd like to put that at the top of the list of the memo that we send out for help with getting body cameras for officers. Even if there's an up to one shift and they could trade them off, I think that would certainly help and make our job easier and protect our police department and our citizens both. So I think that's important. I think we should-
I think one of the things about the state budget generally is that we have to move our mindset into era. The past would come in the 60s and 70s and they would just, I get this every day, you have this group comes in and says, we've got the most needy issue and when you spend money on us, it's gonna save the state money in the long run.
Sounds like my wife.
It, it's uncanny. They all went to the same lobbying school. So the difficulty with this stuff is, is that was a period of expanding revenue. We are at the moment in a period of declining revenue. So we do have to scope out some additional sources of revenue. I like the stock transfer tax, which does the most bang for the buck. And what that would do is if it went for infrastructure, then some of the other areas in the budget could be freed up for other uses. But in terms of some of the other things they're talking about for upstate transit, would be a tax on the ride-sharing companies. That has been proposed. There's also vape liquid, I believe is still not taxed. I think that is something that probably should be done. We, again, we've got to look at the revenue side. We cannot simply, oh, internet sales is another example. Right now, we tax internet sales when the sales are involving New York entities. But if you're in California in your garage and you're sending product to New York and you're doing it through Amazon, you know, you may not be taxed on that. So I think we gotta, we gotta talk about raising revenue, that this money does not, does not drop from the sky. And I don't think we can continue to rely on the notion that somehow the economy's gonna zoom forward and provide us with an unlimited source of new revenue. So, you know, obviously, the issue of the body cameras is very important. We, I, I would certainly love to see that happen and I'd love to see the state play a role. I don't even see why the municipality should have to do it at all. It should be state policy. But again, we have this revenue issue.
Yeah, so one thing, I think that there's no question we should all believe in a progressive tax structure. And we do have a progressive tax structure in the state. The more wealthier, pay more. Maybe not the percentages. We can disagree about that. But at some point, a progressive and more progressive tax structure becomes what you would call regressive. And you don't lose a million people in 10 years or 190,000 to walk out of state in one year because your taxes are too low if you don't have enough revenue. My concern is, we're number two in Tax Freedom Day. Does everybody at this table know what Tax Freedom Day is? That's the day everybody in this room in the state of New York pays their state, local and property taxes. You go into the middle of the May in New York State, that's five months. Only New Jersey and Connecticut go into June, almost six months. Half of their salary goes, goes for taxes. Now, I'm not saying that's the only reason we're challenged here in New York State. I think regulations are part of it. I think mandates are part of it. But I know those people close to New Jersey who want to get their gasoline, drive across the border because they got the highest gasoline taxes. I don't know if it's in the nation, but certainly New Jersey does better and they get their gas there. They get their gas there, they're on a quarter, come back. Concerns me a little bit is about this Vermont thing, while they legalized marijuana. And Superintendent of Police has said, "We're going to spend a lot of money on patrols now, because they're going to be driving from New York into Vermont, buying marijuana, and then driving, because it's going to have an impact on your driving abilities. It's just going to, if you're going to drive in drug." And so, you know, I'd like to see us moderate a little bit. I'm not opposed to taxes, but I, I think we're hoisted on our own petard with that federal tax bill, because we're not in line with some of the other states in New York State.
Well, I think it's really important when we have this discussion of taxes to indicate that we do have an extreme difference of philosophy here. In my view, the two states that have pursued the Trump style of tax cutting are economic disasters right now. And that's Kansas and Oklahoma. So, you know, cutting taxes is not the solution to every problem. Building first-class infrastructure is extremely important to business. It's important to creating jobs and so forth. So I think one of the problems is that we don't get the help we used to get from the federal level on infrastructure, because the federal government's spending money on a whole host of other issues. I just wrote, it's about a 20-point memo to my constituents. It's about the truth about taxes. When you look at the taxes, you'll see one of the main problems New York has is we are exporting our tax revenue to the rest of the country. So if, for example, when it comes to federal taxes, we're getting back 80 cents on the dollar of what we put in. Now, we've undertaken this as Americans, because we have to support very much poorer states. But some of those states are getting a pretty damn good deal. Like Texas is getting a dollar and 50 cents for every dollar they put in. And they have oil, which they charge us a tax on to bring it to New York. So we are subsidizing the governments of Florida, Texas, Alaska, North Dakota, and the list is fairly endless. So those are one of the reasons, there are many reasons why some of the taxes are higher here, and not all the points that Jim made are wrong. But we have to recognize that we've been subsidizing other states in this country, and this current federal budget makes it a lot worse.
Well, as an economist, I like the debate, but we'll try to get, we'll try to get back to what we're trying to do. We're trying to raise revenues without increasing taxes. And that's one of the reasons we'll be sending you a memo for part of money, because we really think that'll be an economic driver for the city, as you're well aware of. And any more questions or comments from my colleagues? Senator Chaska, would you like to say anything further?
Just thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for your public service. As I said, we all know the challenges we did at this level before, and we'd like to mitigate them for you as best we can. And, you know, I bring a lot of classes in to take tours of the Capitol. And the question they always ask me, it's always going to be asked, "What do you do as a state senator? What do you do as a state senator?" And I used to have this big, long convo, and then I realized the answer's pretty simple. It's the same answer all of us should give. We're there to try to eliminate the challenges and the obstacles that are there for our constituents. So they, we all could be everything we can be with God, given talents we give. So hopefully, we can help to mitigate some of the obstacles for your constituents along with you.
I second the motion.
Okay. Well, we'd really like to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules. We know that time is a premium for both of you, as well as someone in Santa Barbara. And we really appreciate the partnership that you created with the city and in us as well. So thank you very much for your public service and your work. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn for a second. Finance is closing. Thank you. You're up. Oh, John, you're up. Sorry.
Fall to our public safety. We have one item on the agenda. Employee, final review, employee background check. So if I'll teach you, you want to discuss on this a little, or we're good with this, to move forward?
Yeah, the public hearing, I can't remember if anybody even came to speak on it. It's an idea that's already been approved by the council previously. Just moving forward with the law.
Any comment?
No.
Go ahead.
Next question. So if you've been reading it, the local law says that some prospective employees have been convicted of felony misdemeanor. It says that any decision regarding the employee's fitness for position would be made upon review. Factors contained in New York State Correction Law 75, 751 to 753. Can you just give us a little bit more information with that, New York State?
Off the top of my head, I cannot. So do you have your, do you get an answer tomorrow?
Yeah, because I would, I mean, I.
Just it lays out what factors you'd be taking to account in a particular job. We find, again, to get all the specifics. Somebody's not going to be eliminated from a position just because they have any conviction. It's, conviction has to be related in some way to what they're doing. There has to be a reason, an actual reason you can articulate on why to prevent them from.
Okay, so it's, what you're saying, basically directly related to the position, not just any, any conviction?
Absolutely. This is not meant to prevent people with convictions from being able to get jobs. It's just meant that we confirm the accuracy of people's application for the employer job.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Can I make a motion?
Motion.
I think second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other business for public safety? Or a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I want to open city planning and development. And the first item up is the affirmative, affirmative action quarterly report. Mr. Gardner, you're up.
All right, I want to think what I'm going to, I'm going to talk about.
Yeah, we don't need the mic, it's for people.
Oh, sorry. Okay, all right. So the first thing I want to do, I guess I want to move this along. Now I won't take too much time, but you got the summary of the report. I'm ready for you. But I will highlight a few items from the, from this question that Porterfield raised about the impact of requirements for municipality on contracts and how it affects municipalities. And if you look at the summary of the project that we have going on right now, and you look down to the bottom, and you see the participation, and where the contracts went, and the results for MWBE participation, DVE participation, you'll notice that out of the roughly $28 million in contracts that we've had in place last year, a little less than 1% went to NBE firms, 15, 16% went to WBE firms, and about 2%, 3% went to DVE, which we include, you know, the MWBE, but it's a disadvantaged business. But the impact here is, the long and short of this particular case is if you drill down to the numbers, tell specifically about the impact. If we, contracts from municipalities not in compliance with what the state mandates with some funding that we have, you know, and then we have a challenge, you know, it does affect us directly. For example, on this list, we have four contractors that wasn't in compliance to, because of the funding that we have from the state. And because they're not in compliance, we're currently holding a little over $800,000 in payments to these contracts. Now, this is a matter that we've been trying to address with them going back into June and July, and, you know, now it's coming to a head and start, you know, hit them in the pocket. So, you know, so the information is starting to come forth. But that, that is a direct impact to us, to the tune of, you know, $1 million. And Tony can tell you what impact it's going to the finance department, because we're not able to go to prison, these folks do what they need to do in a city compliant, you know, with their education plan, demonstrating why they can't find MWBE firms to work on these projects. So there's a direct impact there. And the other part here that we need to pay attention to is there are some things pending that's going, you know, working its way through the state, saying that all funding that comes to municipalities could potentially come up on Article 15A. And that's going to be a dramatic impact on us, meaning, you know, we're talking about, you know, being able to get, you know, the 5% or the 12%, you know, on these things. When it comes down to municipalities, come up on the 15A, it's going to mandate that we work toward that 30% component. So again, those are direct issues that's going to affect us. So we need to start getting our, whether how we address that. You know, some of the ways we need to do that is, again, build capacity. The front that we have, we need to fast up a larger net to attract more MWBE firms, you know, and folks, and also training, you know, to build the capacity of these firms. But we have a lot of things we need to be doing, and we're trying to address that, you know, in our legislative force. So those are, you know, just a couple of things to, you know, keep in mind as you go through the court. Stay with us on employment. Again, I won't go through the, you know, so thank you. If you'll see that in front of people. Basically, especially the city, has about 74 new hires. You know, and our current goal, it's around 569. And again, you'll see the, what the breakdowns are, kind of who the, you know, how, what the trajectory come from, and, you know, how that impacts the city. Some of the highlights that we have going on, we're getting prepared for our summer youth mentor program again this year. We're working again, the, as the county council is saying, as well as the county SGA training agency. So we're getting, you know, very, very excited by the potential of not killing that event rate again more, and also enhancing, you know, our program more, you know, reverse opportunity for our folks. One thing that we're doing that's new this year, we're proposing our first Section 3 training program for, for city residents. And we call it Section 3 because we're talking about lower-marting income folks taking advantage of some of the federal funding that comes into the, into the state. So, so we're proposing to recruit and train 30 residents, city residents under the Section 3 program. And I think I have a summary there, I can turn up all of the, there's been a couple. Basically, it's 125-hour course. And then, you know, they don't come out with a whole sheet plan, you know, job readiness skills, don't be working for a second in college, and the SGA program to, again, facilitate and to make that happen. The other thing we're doing is outreach. Again, we talk about creating opportunities, and, you know, we have to cultivate and develop small firms, local things, MWBE firms, all Section 3 firms. Basically, we have, looking at what can we do to not only create jobs in the community, how we get people trained in skills, so they can take advantage of living wage opportunities. And this sort of ties directly into what I'm talking about with the substance skills training program. We take in folks from the low-marting income area and train them to go through the process, put them in a position where they can earn $30,000 a year, you know, in the field. So again, you know, just, just do the math, you know, if we invest in, you know, in the community, you know, that's like $9,000,000 that come back, you know, to the community. And these folks are more likely to stay here because they have home care. You can think about it, somebody gets an opportunity where they can get a living wage, a nice place to live, you know, they can, you know, be the one to purchase some of these homes that we got around here. There's a lot of upside to why we want to invest in. And then the last piece is, time is to create opportunities and develop opportunities for, for small businesses. So we're looking at, my goal is to take, identify 10 small firm, construction firm, and put them into a nine-month training program. We go through all aspects of running a business, you know, from the accounting, and the chances, you know, the marketing, estimating, the op, the op piece, and partnering with some of the prime contractors, you know, like the AGC, the Eastern Contracts Association, and folks like that, you know, so that you're increasing their ability to move forward and grow their business. What that does, though, is if I take a small contractor that's typically working, you know, by themselves, you know, one-man show, he's out in the field seven, six o'clock in the morning, working all day. He's too tired at six o'clock to come in, do his paperwork, estimates, and do his thing back. So I'm trying to convince them that, number one, we need to get you a back-office person. So that would be somebody that would get out of this 30 from the community and train these opportunities. So you need somebody to handle the paperwork, how do you do your billing, you know, accounting, and those types of things. We'd also need somebody to help you with the estimate, you know, the bid problem. And then the final thing is you need supervision on the job, so that you're not a one-man show trying to do it all. So you take that one, that one job, you've created three opportunities right here in the community, because we're homegrowing it. So, so between those 10 businesses, we can create 30 jobs right here, you know, in, you know, right here in our city. So I'm very, very excited.
Any questions, Ms. Portiff?
Yeah, Mr. Gardner, you talked about the Section 3 construction training program. How, what is the funding mechanism going to be for that? How would that be funded?
I'm going after CUG funds to fund that.
Okay. And my additional question is, I know that you've put on several workshops or forums for different contractors to come in, so that firms can get to know them, different MWBE firms. And it's been a great, you've done a great job, and I've heard really good feedback about that. Up until now, that's been paid for by the contractors that supported it. Will that be ongoing, or, you know, how is that?
Well, for this year, that's still being funded by our sponsors. So we have a lot of folks in AGC. Now, currently, we're into the next phase of doing a four-week series on killer clauses and contracts. So this is like the first, so you have attorneys come in, and you talk about how to break a contract down, some of the things about how to prepare yourself, and, you know, those type of things. So that's very messy. So those, you know, we're sponsored with, you know, people like the CHA, and things like that. So, so they, you know, they underwrite that, also they cover deals. And also, we partner with them to, you know, do this formal program that's going to take us like eight months. So the idea there is, if I took a firm, and they're with us for the eight months, and during that eight-month period, you're going to have an opportunity to work, let's say, one-on-one with a firm, let's say like the CHA, or whatever. You know, so he, once a week, with one of the principals, talk about your business. So you're building a relationship. And then at the end of the nine-month period, we're looking to ask them to take this firm on in a mentor-approaching relationship for the next two or three years. So now, you put them in a situation where they grow their business, become a sustainable business, and then as they grow and they have a need to hire and bring more people on, they're going to come back to the community and do that. But that's where they came from, they have to understand how that works. And that's like, God is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm looking at this report here, and overall, and I just want to understand if I'm clear. You mentioned in the report here that Wardit, so the MWBE.
Is that a Wardit dollar amount, or is this actual? That's the actual.
Okay. Anything else? There is nothing. Mr. Gardner, thank you so much, it was a good report, and I appreciate it. Next up is the final review on SECR, for community builders, and that's a follow-up. I don't know. Do you have the numbers for her?
Are there any questions that I can answer? The document's attached there, so-
Is there any questions for the mayor?
Just for them to do the cleanup, for us to be-
Correct, this is the next step in the project. And again, if anybody has any questions, the next couple of days, feel free to call me or call Chris.
I've read through this, I'm comfortable-
Yeah, I mean, I, it's the standard-
I'll move it.
Okay. Do I have a second?
We both moved, I'll second.
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's move. The next item on the agenda is the nuisance law discussion, and that's Mr. Palatico.
Yeah, I'm prepared to discuss whatever questions the council has. As you know, about a month ago, we received a letter from the New York Civil Rights Union about some critiques of our nuisance ordinance. We reviewed that, and I had to go into paper, because it was merited, the critiques, but we're finalizing, and we talked through them. But at the end of the day, we worked hard when we were writing this, addressed the concerns that they criticized us for. The reference of appellate court decision from last summer that basically says, if you have a nuisance ordinance that deters people from going to the police when they have problems, that that's unconstitutional. And we put language in ours that clearly says, "We're not going to penalize crime victims going to crimes that are committed." So, based on that, I'm very confident that we're unsolved, and we're, and it doesn't require revision to being compliant with that court case from last year.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Palatico?
If you're comfortable that we're okay with this, I assume.
Yeah, completely comfortable.
I thought you took a lot of time and dropped on that.
Yeah. Ms. Rosman.
Well, in the spirit of the policy was not to evict the tenant, it was to make the landlord aware that there were police calls that they might not be aware of at their property. So, you know, I was confused that they would have a problem or concerns with regard to domestic violence situations, when we specifically wrote in there that it didn't pertain to domestic violence or people with disabilities. So, I was a little confused by their concern when it's clearly stated. I assume you'll keep us abreast of changes once we face a response, as far as, like, response again from them.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like they, they've come out, Austin, Steve Rochester had language in our ordinances that addressed some of these potential issues with crime victims. And they said, "No, we appreciate you have it, but we think all of these ordinances are unconstitutional." So, that seems to be their position, but it doesn't, it's not in sync with what the court actually wrote last year.
All right. So, I don't need to, I think we've already moved this habit. So, thank you, Mr. Palatico, I appreciate it. Next item on is Mr. Muniveren, B and I Resolution for the support of the-
Do you have a copy of the-
Yes, I believe it was passed out at the beginning of the-
It was late today.
Everyone should have a copy of this, please, as B and I is applying to New York Main Street Grant Program. And just to give a little bit of history of this, we've been working with the Mount Pleasant Mortgage Association along with the business on Crane Street to look at programs that is available through the state to assist these business owners. And this is one of the things that come up, and B and I is on board to apply for this grant and to help the business on Crane Street Corrida. I know Ms. K Z W and I have been working along with the business people and also the Mount Pleasant Mortgage Association headed by Reverend Bookhold. And, I mean, they are committed to see, you know, something happening on that Corrida, and we are happy to help them in any way possible, and this is a step in the right direction, and it's one of many to come. And we're looking for support to move this resolution so they can move forward with their grant and to be able to assist those businesses around Crane Street and also some of the other area in Mount Pleasant.
So, thank you. This is definitely necessary for the moving forward of the Main Street grants, so people's support of it. Ms. Porteau?
Didn't B and I, excuse me, on B and I, didn't Metroplex apply, wasn't there a Main Street grant that, Metroplex put in for?
For Crane Street?
No. Well, Main Street is for-
For us.
It's the grant. So, is this is obviously separate, apart from that, but under that grant, there's no opportunity for this twenty thousand dollars to be asked for through Metroplex?
I am not sure I can find out that, but I think there's an opportunity out in New York Main Street Technical Assistant Program-
So, is that separate?
On the initial phase of this-
So, that's separate?
And then get into the main funding. So, this is the beginning of writing the grant and to put the necessary paperwork and get everything together.
So, that's separate, apart from what Metroplex is applied for, as I'm saying?
Metroplex, I do not believe has applied for any Main Street grant in Crane Street area.
No. But they say where they're going to use it. So, they applied for the Main Street grant. I just don't remember where they said they're going to use it. So, I know that Metroplex did an application, that grant, they applied for Main Street funding. I don't know that where they, I don't remember the specific area where they said they're going to use it. So, that's, that's my question.
This is, I think, in a different cycle. I think the ones you're referring to, you've got the award or the Mill Lane project.
Okay.
I don't think there's another one since then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I would say it's more of a, maybe a different project altogether.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I need to get a motion to go into executive session, say all the proposals.
Second.
Okay. Okay. So, I need to go into executive session. We're in executive session now. So, thank you all.